I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of this law of liberty and justice for all.
Can you read the statement with certification of the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised for some time long.
Please call roll.
Chairman Menero.
Here.
Ray Zangary.
Here.
Mayor Melham. Mr. Comiskey.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Gold.
Here.
Mr. Corvo. Mr. Gracianno.
Here.
Ms. Laman.
Here.
Ms. Rico. Ms. Novarado.
Here.
Mr. Sinovria. Mr. Giallorenzo. And Mr. Harris.
Here.
And Mr. Doncelli.
President.
Can I have a motion for the approval in a minute for the February 2019 meeting? Motion.
Second.
What was it?
Mr. Comiskey. Please call a roll.
Mr. Menero.
Yes.
And Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Comiskey.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Gold.
Yes.
Mr. Gracianno.
Yes.
Ms. Laman.
Yes.
And Ms. Novarado.
Yes.
Under old business, we have resolution to be memorialized.
Yes. This is the chairman. Mr. Chairman, I was told by the board secretary that this resolution will be prepared and presented for adoption at the May 9th meeting.
Now, chairman's comments, I'd just like to remind the members of the board, they should have gotten your packet this month, financial disclosure, you guys have to fill that out, otherwise you can be fined, if you have any problems, maybe you can go online and do it, but it should be self-explanatory, all members need to do it. Applications before the board?
Mr. Chairman, Belleville Industrial Center, the property owners requested that this public hearing on the preliminary investigation blight study be kept open and carried to the May 9th hearing, so anyone in the public who's here for Belleville Industrial Center, 705-757 Main Street, that hearing will be carried, remain open for public question and comment at the May 9th hearing, anyone who wants to attend should come at that time and no further notice will be given.
Okay, and the next matter is, we received a request from the applicant's attorney, Gassion
Pamaco, on application number PB 201904, that application will be also carried to the May 9th hearing, at which time there'll be a public hearing, anyone in the public wishing to be involved in that hearing should attend on May 9th and no further notice will be given.
Thank you. Next, we have PB 2018-11 Franklin Avenue and Mill Street redevelopment plan.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Your name, please?
Mary Ann Boochi-Carroll.
Thank you very much. I'm a professional planner with CME Associates, and I want to introduce for the planning board a little background on the Mill Street plan, so Franklin Avenue Mill Street plan, is there feedback or is that catching? I want to make sure it's okay, it sounds a little odd. Or it's just an echo?
Exactly, maybe, right?
It's a little echo, but it's not...
Exactly, yeah.
If you want to step up a little bit, you can.
I'll be okay?
Yeah.
Better this way? Okay.
Come inside.
Come inside?
Yes.
So, Franklin Avenue Mill Street plan is essentially the plan where Franklin Manor is located, Franklin Manor is completed Phase 1 of the development, and it is compliant with the development plan. CME was tasked with two things in relationship to this plan, to update the boundary of the redevelopment plan, there had been some changes that were reflected in the plan itself, and to update the development standards to have them applied to Phase 2 of Franklin Manor. So what I'll do is first start out with what you have before you is a draft dated February 29th, 2019 by CME, it updates the current redevelopment plan, proposes to update to current pending redevelopment plan, the latest one is dated as March 13th, 2009. The issue with that plan is that it currently does not reflect the boundary area that the council adopted or recommended to be part of the plan. So I'll go through the history so it's clear, so that in 2008, the first study was authorized for the Phase 1 portion of Franklin Manor, and that was adopted into a redevelopment plan, the plan that we had before you, 201309. Then several years later, there was an authorization to expand that area, very slight size in expansion, it was not even, it was a fraction of an acre, but it was done, there was a full study done, and there was a hearing and an adoption designation by the council as being in need of redevelopment, and a recommendation to the planning board to incorporate it into the area. In the meantime, the land was further subdivided, and those portions of land became part of what is the lot that now houses Franklin Manor. So the development had moved forward, but the governmental net never added the additional area into the plan. There are two maps in the document before you that outline the historical property of the lot and what the boundary of the new lots that are within the boundary of the plan. It's like .4 acres, and it's very small. You don't have a map? Okay, I can, I have it, and I can mark it as evidence and pass it around for you? Thank you. So the first map that'll pass around was... These are the, this will be the boundary map, this is the map that reflects the current area, if I can have it marked and pass it around for you.
We'll mark that as day 1?
Mm-hmm. That reflects how the lots currently exist, and it also incorporates the lots that were designated to be in need of redevelopment into part of that property. There's a second map that says historic lot configuration, and the historic lot configuration shows a much larger piece of property, because the original designation took a fraction of this one large piece of land, it was .04 acres, and made it part of the area needing redevelopment. And that is incorporated to plan so that it's very clear to everyone that it was not the entire lot, which portions of lot were made, which portions of those historic lots were made part of the redevelopment.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
On the historical... It's Block 2401, I think, it seemed to incorporate beyond, was there an addition to the area needing redevelopment, or are you proposing addition to that?
We're not proposing it now, no, it was already done, but it was never, it was never recognized in the redevelopment plan boundary map, and so we're trying to update the plan to reflect all that was adopted by the council.
Do we see that? I have a little dispute with the map.
Oh, go ahead, you can...
There's an area that I don't believe the town owns privately held, that is to be included in it, maybe I'm viewing the map in part...
Which map are you looking at?
Historic.
The historic has nothing, has, the area that's historic just shows the shape of the lots several years ago, those lots don't exist now, and those lots are not being proposed as part of this redevelopment plan area.
This one's no longer, this is the town's lot, that's the senior center.
Do you have any more maps, because there are us that have not seen these? Um, I'm sorry, I, I...
Get extra maps?
Yeah, it was those in the plan, I could ask.
No, I didn't even get...
Yeah, let me explain it, I'm sorry if I'm not fully clear, this is a very confusing thing, when the, when the study was, was done in, what year was, what year was it? It was, it was done in 2010, and in 2010, the request for expansion was to include Block 3101 Lot 3 and approximately .04458 acre portion of Block 2401 Lot 1, that big lot that you see.
Right.
Only a .04458 acre portion of that was included in the study, and only that small portion was designated, and that small portion was added to the area you now see on the boundary map, that's the difference.
Remember a little bit of history, after we approved a certain section there, because I have to be on board then, they wanted and deed it back some land to us, didn't they? Is that part of what you thought?
That was part of the subdivision, it wasn't part of the study area, it was part of the subdivision that affected that property, that's why I included those historic lots in there. So everybody can see that Lot 3101 Lot 3 and the other lot, that was a larger lot, we're not asking to make that part of the redevelopment area, that's why I included the historic lots in there, so you could see that. Do we have any extra maps at all? Um, did not come into our package, I have it here.
That's the historic, and that's the...
And they're both Lot 3, is it, is it one lot even though it's drawn as two?
I gave you my, my, yeah, there is, you know, there is, what do you mean, is there one?
It's now one lot, it's now one lot.
Yes, yes, it is.
It's now being consolidated.
It is, and so now there's one big lot that exists that's different than the designation documents that the council adopted, and there wasn't a redevelopment plan that reflected that, and that's what this amendment shoot tries to do, it basically takes that missing step of putting in place the expanded area officially as part of the redevelopment plan, and that's what, that's what this does. And it is confusing, because it's unusual that there would be a blight for a portion of property, and that's what made this difficult to research, but that's why the historic map is there, because we didn't want to hide what the lots looked like, we wanted to show you what original pieces were referenced in the study.
So that's, that's about Block 2401, right?
Yeah.
That's one of the...
So, the lot is all one lot, and now part of the Franklin Manor site. So, the second task that this proposes to do is amend the redevelopment plan standards to ensure that Phase 2 could move forward in a way that's consistent with the master plan and modern development standards, and also make sure that it's consistent with Phase 1 as well, so it doesn't look like a whole separate property, things match up, and so the amendments that were done were to, first, purpose and objective of the redevelopment plan, to provide a modern redevelopment standards that will encourage the completion of the redevelopment within the redevelopment plan area boundary. The second thing was to amend the intent and purpose to assure that the redevelopment plan applied with the purposes and intents of the master plan reevaluation and new master plan goals and objectives. The, the, the next thing was some amendments under proposed land use and development standards on page 3. Permitted uses were adjusted to make sure both market rate and affordable senior housing were permitted within the redevelopment plan.
Senior or age restricted?
Senior is age restricted, that's what I meant.
Well, in the original plan, it was a little controversy, because we called it senior, and it's really an age restricted, 55 and over, right?
Yes. Yeah, and this, this also amends the maximum number of units, originally it was 161 units, now the proposed units, the total is 111 units.
Is that another? What is that?
Eighty-six.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Yeah, that's, that's...
Eighty-six was the first.
Maybe it would be helpful for you to describe what exists on the property today, the number of units, what was approved previously, and what is, what is being proposed, or what would be permitted under this, I'm sorry, what would be permitted under this?
What would be permitted would be the 24 more units, and the bedroom mix, the two bedroom mix requirements still remain in place, so currently there's a 10% requirement that 10% of all units are two-bedroom units, and that will remain with no change. The only thing I'm pointing out here are things that, that were being proposed to change, basically to make sure that Phase 2 can go forward in the current market. After, you know, after a number of years, things change slightly, and the redevelopment plan is very specific, so the whole of the idea is to make sure that it's still relevant to modern Phase 2. The addition, there was additional standards for architecture and pedestrian circulation that had been added, one that states the facade shall be material color and frustration to match the Phase 1 facade, the window types of the placement and size would be similar to that of the first phase, pedestrian circulation will require sidewalks and inaccessible curves throughout, which is something that wasn't there, it seems that it would be expected, but the redevelopment plan existed. And that, okay, the other thing that, that was added was a section that references the residential site improvement standards, and to ensure that if there are any exceptions to those requirements, that it's consistent with the goals of the section that's at. And that's, that's, that's everything, basically trying to bring the plan up to date in boundary area, up to date for modern development for Phase 2. And I apologize about the map, not having enough maps. If they were in the packet, as she stated, there's two of us that didn't have any, so it would've been nice.
Well, if I may?
Sure.
I'm a little confused, because, see, in the appendices, it's, it's, it's a lot, there's a lot referred to 2401 Lot 1, and need redevelopment?
Okay.
In the back, when you look at your list, when you look at this 2401, is the whole area Little League Field?
Yeah, 2401, it'll always say portion of 2401 Lot 1, that is bringing that study area designation that was done back then into the redevelopment plan, and back then, they said a portion of that lot, and then it was then subdivided to reflect the current lot that exists, the current boundary map that's being attached to this plan is the smaller lot, the smaller map that you see.
Lot 3.
Yeah, that is, so, so this, yeah, 3101 Lot 2.0 and 3101, yeah.
Okay, so away from here...
These, portions of this were studied.
Right.
This is what got adopted.
Gotcha.
So the current boundary, thank you, is this, I did not realize that was not...
Did you see that? You got that?
Yeah, that...
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Because, because right now, there's pieces of that lot that's technically outside the redevelopment area, when the council voted to have them within it, and the lots were subdivided to match that lot, but the plan never...
Okay.
Any other board members have questions?
So, Mary Ann, make it clear, at the end, this boundary map, map is more...
That's the only one that matters, in fact, you could vote to take that historic map out if it's confusing and disturbing, I was there to show everyone that this is what the lots were, because otherwise, without that map, that historical map, this document is referencing lots that no longer exist, and you'd be reading through it saying, well, this is the area the council designated, but where are these, what are, where is it? What are these lots? So without that, you were kind of wrong.
Any other members of the board have questions? Anybody in the public have questions?
Yeah, I do, we came here and any of these meetings, it really just brought on that on the record because mentally we're going to have an open public meeting complaint filed, does every meeting the public can hear, we can't see, I don't know what you're talking about, I don't know why we don't have a map so the public and the board can, you folks don't even understand what's going on, we're out here, can't hear and can't see anything. But in regards to this, Mr. Gracianno brought up, he got all the videos in the meeting, we were, I was asking, time and again, he kept saying, part of what, 2401, I kept asking the council and the board at that time, what part? Oh, we'll get it to you, nobody ever got it to me, Mr. Harris was supposed to get it to me, that, oh, we'll have the engineer send it to you, and, and my fear was, that's a big lot, it goes all the way back to Little League Field, all right? You see mistakes were made, that she has made, you know, Ms. Boochi admits that mistakes were made on this thing here.
Well, I don't think it was a mistake, I think that, that this actually, this map actually shows, answers your question, I think.
Well, you're here tonight because something wasn't done properly, you said...
No, not done.
It wasn't a mistake, it just wasn't, the boundary wasn't clearly reflected, and we created a map that did that.
Okay, look, it wasn't clearly done, then it's a mistake, you want to call it an error, take back mistake, we'll call it an error, but whatever it was, it wasn't done properly. And my fear is that we're going to live in Little League Field. The other thing...
It's kind of a little down in the field.
Well, that 2401 is a big lot, if you see...
Well, they clearly show on a new map, it doesn't...
Show the map, show the new map.
Listen.
Yeah, no, they clarify it, they separate it.
Show them the color copy, it's not clear.
Okay, thank you, okay, so this is what's proposed to be adopted tonight, the boundary map that clearly outlines the boundary of the redevelopment plan, which marked A1, the Little League Field is not included in the area, this is the senior center, this is the Franklin Manor.
All right, but that's part of Block 2401.
This is no longer, it no longer is, and that's why we showed the historic lot lines, this is, this is the existing...
So you're creating subdivision?
No, no, this is the existing lot line, and this is the boundary that the redevelopment plan takes, and this is, would be the adopted boundary line, no Little League Field in there, only the private property.
Well, the Little League is in that block 2401, so I'm concerned about that, doesn't feel like...
Former, former, former lot, it's, the lot has been reconfigured, Mr. Brandon Tony.
Yeah, I know, I object to that, and the other thing, I want the record to show, because...
If you're going to make a statement, I have to swear, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
State your name.
Vincent Frantantoni, 129th month progress there. This whole thing was wrong, I just couldn't afford $8,000 to $10,000 for this attorney who could beat this thing, this was a dedicated, part of that land, the senior citizen recreation center, dedicated land donated by Jergens Lodge, and I have all the original deeds, they took it, they go, oh, don't worry about it, Mr. Gassion, the town manager at the time, they got some food company in Ohio to take the restriction off, three attorneys, but one who was willing to take the case, I just couldn't afford it, this is a balloon ball, this is totally illegally, you can't take something that was dedicated properly, donated by Jergens, and to use for recreation only, and they took part of that.
So, Mr. Frant...
Took part of that, and it's totally illegally, if I hit the lottery, I'll bring the lawsuit, then I get the attorney.
So, just so you...
But this is, this is crazy, what's going on in this town, I mean, we just take things and take things, forget the law, forget what happens and all that, and it's, our town is being destroyed, so, again, I don't know what's going on here with this, I mean, building...
I'll clarify what's going on.
The original, the other thing I want to ask is, you said 110 units, now I can't hear you, 110 more units or what?
No, 110 total, instead of 161.
24.
Adds to the original 70-some odd, what was the original?
Eighty-six, now 24, man.
Yeah, there was originally...
Eighty-six and six, eighty...
Eighty-six, or there it went.
Eighty-six, and then it was 68, he was supposed to build again, but now he's down to 24.
Right, are they going to have sufficient parking?
Yes.
Yes, it's an increase in parking.
On this, man.
Yes.
Are we going to, are these age-restricted housing?
Yes.
Dedicated, or market rate?
The market rate age-restricted, but it could be either, the redevelopment plan would permit both.
All right, and what do you consider, what do you, municipal land use, that considers age-restricted, what age?
I believe the, the standard is...
Under the state constitution, it's 55, 55 and older, otherwise it's age discrimination, so the state constitution permits, commits a distinction between 55 and older.
I agree, but I want the record to show that, so we don't have other people, so we're saying, they're like 55 and older, age restricted, right? No children?
I, that's, that's a...
There's no restriction on, on children.
You can't, yeah, you can't, yeah.
It's not legal.
It's not legal to do that, yeah, you can't do that.
The tenants have to be 55 and older.
There could be no adults over, no adults that are not 55 and older, but there's no restriction on children.
Number of children, were they one bedrooms or two bedrooms?
Most are one bedrooms, there's only 10% two bedrooms permitted.
Yeah, that's the other thing, the 10%, is that 10% of the total 110, or just the million there?
No, the total.
Okay.
Mr. Frantantoni, can I just explain the process, where we are in the process, we definitely hope for it? So, so this, this is one ordinance that was introduced by council, and under the redevelopment law, it needs to be referred to the planning board for consistency review with the master plan, which Mary Ann testified to, it's not really a public hearing, but in the interest of hearing your thoughts, the board is going to consider them, so what will happen is there'll be a recommendation of this board back to the governing body as to whether this amendment to the redevelopment plan is consistent with the master plan, then the governing body will hold a public hearing, at which time you will be able to express your comments as you did tonight. This, this board, I'm sure is glad to hear it, but this would not be the venue, it would be at the before the government.
There'll be a public hearing before the government.
At the time of the adoption of the ordinance, this is technically an ordinance that's being reviewed by this board, to be revert back to the council for adoption, and that's the public hearing.
Thanks for that, actually.
Anybody else in the public have a question? If not, we'll close the public portion at this time, is there any summation you'd like to make?
No, I don't think so, I think that this, if I said anything, it would be that anything that was done properly to this point, and that any of the concerns about the area and the designation, that was something that was already approved and completed many years back, so adding that new boundary into the plan is all that's happening at this point in time, in a clear manner to reflect the current lot configuration.
Thank you. So what we need to do is take a vote, if we recommend that this is consistent with the master plan, correct, and to the council for authorizing the communication to the council as to that. Find any other comments you have. So, is anyone out, any comments? If not, would someone... If not, would someone like to make a motion that we recommend this to the council, that this plan is consistent with the master plan?
Who'll make the motion?
Please call the roll.
Chairman Mira.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Comfi.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bull.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam, and Ms. Adorado.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, we have PV 2017-04, which is 78-02 Washington Avenue. It's the final redevelopment plan.
I don't have to use this one? Use this one. Okay, great, thank you. As far as introduction or process, we're rebuilding now, or just talk, I can just talk about the plan itself.
Could you just try a little louder?
Okay, try that.
There you go.
I'm used to talking low. I'm used to having a mic and so, okay.
Yeah, Tommy.
Let me see.
I don't believe that someone's actually plugged in to me.
Now, let's see if I can just drag one over, maybe she could stand here. Is that okay?
Oh, wait, wait.
Check, check, check.
Oh, great. Oh, perfect. Okay.
Do you mind standing here?
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
All right, keep it close.
How's that?
Better.
Better?
There you go.
Much better? Okay. It's a little, it's a little weird.
Want to hold it this way?
Yeah, maybe this way, that. Okay. All right, so, so the whole redevelopment, the goal of the redevelopment process is to rebuild areas that were previously undeveloped or fallen into disrepair. And this board recommended designating this portion of Washington Street, Washington Avenue, and William Street in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation area to the governing body. And it was adopted on November 27, 2018. So, or actually, that was, that was the recommendation date, the adoption date is January 22, 2019. The next step in the process is to outline specific standards that would be used to bring the property back to be contributing towards the community. And the redevelopment plan standards replace zoning standards in that matter and can be done in very specific forms to ensure that the development that will happen there will be in the best interests of the community and achieve the goals that were originally sought to be achieved. There are, there are certain requirements of a redevelopment plan, certain components that are necessary to be looked at, compliance with other plans, local plans in the area, compliance with the master plan, state redevelopment plan. There's requirements for relocation, if there's any residents within the area. All of these are incorporated in the plan as part of the statutory requirements. So what I'll do is basically just give an overview of the standards, which really are the most, probably the most important component to the planning board. Because if this does get adopted into law, the next step would be a site plan of any interested developer, designated developer before the board. So the redevelopment plan identifies permitted uses first. And as this is on Washington, the goal of the master plan and the discussions moving forward were to bring back the traditional development style of Washington. Ground floor retail, residential above, and make sure that retail is active and lively. It's very common now to see four, five story residential above a retail base in, in a lot of communities in New Jersey. And these buildings are very attractive, they're very successful. And this redevelopment plan seeks to produce that kind of development for level. So the permitted uses are basically mixed use, very general, mixed use retail on the ground floor, residential above on Washington Street.
Question.
Well, I'm sorry, I can't do it in there. On Washington Avenue at street level, with the only interruption being the lobby. A restaurant would be required on the corner, the space incorporating an outdoor cafe and, and cafe tables. Retail sales services, including ATM on the facade are permitted within the ground floor, street frontage, and all uses would be permitted here with, with the restaurant required on the corner, except the uses listed as prohibited. Auto body, auto body repair, auto sales, truck and motorcycle, recreational vehicle sales, gas stations, car washes, banks and banking, financial services, drive-up facilities, motels, lumber yards, and service park. The bulk standards for this kind of building are the type of front yard setback where there's usually zero setback, but providing enough sidewalk as would be necessary to make for allowance for cafe table space and landscaping along the streetscape. So the setback standards permits any setback that would maintain at least 17 and a half feet of sidewalk along Washington and 10 feet on William Street. And, let's see, and also requires five foot setback on each side yard adjacent to the building. The bedroom mix is a maximum required 20% two bedroom units, so that there can't be more than 20% two bedroom units. So there's a maximum of.
On, on the packet here, it says minimum required amount of two or more bedrooms, 75%?
Yes.
Hold on, clear the way that. Minimum required amount of two or more bedrooms, 75%.
That's, that's, that's an older plan. I'm not sure where that was.
April 9? This is from April 9?
Yes, April 9.
Where do you, where do you stand on this?
Not the color copy.
Yeah, so that's what I thought, so the newest one said.
Oh, it's not the color copy?
It is April 9, but that was the line, and that's the black and white copy that everybody had.
And for, for the exact reason, as you said, it wasn't clear.
So 80% is one bedroom, two bedrooms? I mean, one bedroom studios?
Yes.
Does everybody just have the black and white copy?
Yeah. Okay, and then the, let's see, streetscape and pedestrian circulation requirements and incorporating decorative sidewalks, street trees, and, and extensive design standards for facade treatment, and, and then these spaces within the building have been incorporated. You can find that from page eight through page 10. The building would require a garage on the first floor or, or on the first underground level, or both. But any garage space on Washington would be wrapped by retail space, so it's hidden. And the first, in the, in the first floor of Washington Avenue would be activated with uses, but the, but the building would be serviced by garage parking. It also requires the garage to be closed and screened. It doesn't have to be more than 50% closed, but it likely would be. And, and the, any edge of the garage that is exposed would be screened to look like the rest of the building facade. If there were any openings, those openings would be shaped like windows and the rhythm of the building would continue. So there's a lot of, there's lighting standards, mechanical screening standards, and signage standards that apply to this type of, of building. Are there any questions?
I have one. How do you manage the, the retail spaces in the building?
How do you manage them?
Where, where would they be located? How would they be accessed?
So they, they're located along, along, mostly, there are along Washington Avenue. There's unlikely room for them. They could wrap, portion, portion of the corner of them will wrap to William. The access for service would be, trash and service would be into the garage from the outside, back of the space. Loading would be from on street for, for probably all of them. It's unlikely they could get, and you wouldn't want to put a truck in the garage. So loading would have to take place from outside and just be trucked in. It was very urban style. Otherwise, it would be impossible to, to get that kind of building. So that is, that's how it would be serviced.
I just have one question here. Sorry, Mary Ann, could you just talk a little bit about the exhibit? Because I know sometimes the board is concerned about their ability to review the site plan application.
Okay. The, the, the concept plan?
The concept plan.
Okay.
And what the intent is and including it and.
Okay, so if you turn to the last page, what you'll see is an example of, of a building that would be built based on the bulk standards and design standards proposed to the plan. And I'll point out the key components that I think are the most relevant. One of the things I've learned over the years is make what, what, what's most important the requirements and leave the things that are not as, as important to you as flexible items. So one of the most important things that came out of the discussion that I seem to have with everyone on the master plan is to enliven Washington Avenue, bring it back to life, make it special, make sure that the buildings that are built there are special. So as this being a corner lot, the, the best thing that could be done here is to make that corner special. And so the requirement for that corner is to make sure that there is a great use on that first floor. And, and it would be required restaurant. The design standards require special treatment along the entire corner, go all the way up to the facade. And they also require that kind of special treatment every 100 feet down the rest of the building. Other components in the design that are requirements is to have, you see how the building goes in and out. That articulation is required in the, in the design standards as well. There's also a requirement for 70% glazing on the ground floor. That's why you see the glass along, along the base and you see the glass on the special features on, on, at the corners and, and. So the, the, the overall, and, and this, this building has lots of parking in it, but you don't see it. And, and so it provides the service, but it also addresses the community's needs. Thank you, I, you know, and.
The, the artist rendering here is one, two, three, four, four, five, five stories?
Yes.
And the plan permits?
Permits five stories.
Doesn't say six stories?
Um, it might, it actually.
I think the lower story is the garage.
Yeah, the garage, that's a story. It's, it's an underground garage. It permits up to 70 feet, I believe. And this, I mean, honestly, the higher the height, the better. It may sound unusual to you, but the higher the height means the higher floor to ceiling height and the nicer the units. The units that have higher ceilings are just nicer. Yeah. So that few feet is not foreseeable at the sidewalk, but it makes for a much better living environment and higher quality units.
So could you clarify the stories, Mary Ann, please?
I don't want to. Okay, it's seven, 70 feet and six stories.
70 feet, six stories.
I'm asking a question. I'm asking if any changes to this document from, let's say, the document before in terms of height, number of units or anything like that, is really any change in this document from the last one that you prepared on this property?
Um, it's very, it was, well, there was, there was a draft that was done. And, but, but, but there's very little difference. There's little tweaking between the, the original draft and, and the final.
So what had happened is that there was a draft submitted by my office to the board for review. The, the property owner perspective, redevelopment, provided information, had some comments to that plan, and so there were references to that plan. So I knew what was working. You mean the ones that, that the two drafts from the same?
Right, yeah.
So do you want to highlight those, the differences? One of them, the chairman mentioned, two, 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 two units. You want to highlight those changes?
Okay.
So a case of one of the board members to review the, the whole, your draft?
Yeah, I don't have them highlighted, but I'll try and go by memory. Let's see. The side yard setback of five feet, that was misunderstood slightly. So I clarified that to say that for this redevelopment plan, the side yard setback of five feet is from any property line that is perpendicular to the right.
Is that a change? The five foot setback is a change?
No, the five foot was there and, and it was expected on both sides of the building. But the definition of side lot line, based on the zoning ordinance, may have changed what would be permitted here. So this was changed, should just make it very clear, you go by this document. It's five feet on both sides of this building to any lot line that's perpendicular to the street. So that eliminated that uncertainty.
Is that tight for a 70-foot building?
That's, that's a planning question for you.
Dan, what's your?
It's, it's, it's permitted by code. And it is actually, in an urban area, it's actually kind of preferential, honestly. And for a 70-foot building, it's expected, I think.
And that permits a sidewalk?
On, on, on a, on a, on a main street like this, yes. And it permits the, it does permit, it still permits the sidewalk, it's zero, it's zero setback on the front yard. And it's still, and it, it still permits the 17.5 sidewalk width.
And that's in, that's in unison with the new street plan state?
Yes.
Right?
So it matches all that. Yes, and if, if there is not enough room to make the 17 and a half sidewalk, the building would just get set back a little bit further to accommodate that.
So the size of the sidewalk gets protected, no matter what?
Yes, okay. Now, I mean, going forward, when you get to a site plan on this, there's, you know, someone could ask for a deviation for that kind of, you know, for a sidewalk size or for a setback size. They're not prohibited from asking for that. But the plan, as it's laid out, lets anybody interested in developing here know what you want to see. The other theory that was changed is tandem spaces. Tandem spaces in the garage was added, that they do count towards the total requirement. In case they ask you, that both wouldn't be a question in the future. The, what else was added here? There is a, a clarification on canopy, that a canopy that came out the building could extend 10 feet, excuse me, eight feet into the right of way provided it was connected to the building and not mounted into the sidewalk. And you can see there's canopies in the conceptual plan, so that, that's what that was accommodated for. for. Trying to think if there was anything else. Oh. Blade signs were added to be permitted to be, project up to 30 inches off the building. Blade signs are the signs, the old-fashioned signs you see sticking off the building that kind of come out like this and hang from, they come off the building and hang like this and they're up in the air. They're usually about two feet by two feet and they were added. I think that that's it. I mean, if there's something I have not, I don't get it. I think that's it. That's the difference.
Any members of our board have questions? I'll open it to the public. Does anybody in the public have questions, comments? Mr. Frank Dantoni?
This was approved by zoning board about a dozen years ago. Is that approval gone now? They got approval to build 80 units, six stories high. Originally eight stories high, then they come back two years ago and they wanted to build 80 units, six stories high. That was done by the zoning board. Has that been eliminated now?
Things don't go away unless they expire on their own, but this would be a different action. This would be establishing zoning for, for the site. So if a new development came, came to the township, they would comply with these standards.
Well, they came back to the zoning board about a year ago to ask for an extension of their approval. So is that still, is that approval still in effect?
If the approval was extended a year ago, then it would still, then it would be protected against changes in zoning for that, for that one-year period. So that, that's still a valid approval. It doesn't change, it doesn't change the action of this board or the governing body to change the zoning.
So I don't understand why it's back here. They've already been approved and they've come back twice, you know, for an extensions on there and they want to build. You know, I don't understand it.
This doesn't affect it. If, if, if there's an approval on, on a piece of land that was given by the Board of Adjustments and, and it's been extended and, and that extension is still valid, it's still valid and it could move forward and they could pull zoning permits. But if they, at a certain point, it doesn't, if they want to extend it again, they would have to comply with these standards. A certain point, a new development has to comply with these standards. So when that approval expires, it expires and a new application would then follow whatever is newly adopted by the township. So if this zoning gets adopted, they would comply with this.
So what are we doing? An approval application or just the standard?
I just wanted, I was going to answer that question. I just wanted to piggyback on that. Normally what would happen is if this board recommends that this plan is consistent with the master plan, it would go to the governing body. Governing body would then adopt an ordinance similar to, this is the same process as we were on the last matter, and the governing body would adopt a redevelopment plan, which essentially becomes the new zoning for the property. If that, if that property owner or applicant were to come back to this board after the redevelopment plan submitted a site plan application, if this board were to grant that application, they would very likely request that the prior, any prior approvals be withdrawn. It's not unusual for that to happen, but that's normally a condition. If there's an existing approval on a property and a new approval is pending before a board, the board will normally say, okay, your zoning board approval, car the applicant is a condition of approval to withdraw that, that.
Couple of things here. I like some of the prior, for example, the prior plan, they only had the rear setback was one foot, which I, another spoke was ridiculous. According to, I can't hear you, but did you say 10-foot rear yard setback?
No. The, there, there would, it's, it's five foot, so it's not 10.
I'm sorry, five foot?
There is no.
On the side yards?
Yeah, there's two side yards here, so there's technically no rear yard, so it's five. The way this, the way this, the way this is designed and the way the odd shape of the lot, everything would be five.
Well, again, if I heard you correct, you said 17 and a half foot sidewalk on Washington Avenue. Is that from the curb to the front of the building?
From the curb to the front of the building, yes.
All right. And you said 10-foot on William Street?
Yes.
Is that also from curb?
Yes.
To the building facade?
Yes.
And side yards, you said both perpendicular to Washington Avenue.
Yes. So between the next property on William Street, five feet, and between the shopping center, the next shopping center on Washington Avenue, five feet.
All right. Well, that drove it confused. You said 10-foot setback on, on William Street.
No, 10-foot sidewalk, I'm sorry.
10-foot sidewalk?
Yes, 10-foot sidewalk on William Street.
And then five foot from the sidewalk in the buildings? You said two different things, I wrote down, I were confused. You said the side, two side yards perpendicular Washington Avenue.
Two side yards perpendicular to the right of way. So there'll be a side yard on William Street. Because of the shape of this lot, it's L-shaped, there'll be a side yard on William Street and there's a side yard on Washington Avenue. And the, that's five feet.
So what were you talking about, the 10-foot on William Street?
It's sidewalk, sidewalk. The sidewalk would be 10 feet wide on William Street.
All right. And then you said that no more than 20% of the unit should be two-bedroom, but how many overall units?
158 is the maximum permitted.
158 from 80?
That doesn't necessarily mean that will be what's built, but that's the maximum that would be permitted.
Just to clarify, Mr. Frank Dantoni, I don't know if that familiar with that zoning board application, but I think that additional properties prior added.
You talked about the warehouse on William Street and the, the other house on the, on the shop.
Correct. So it's not necessary, apples, apples, not to take away from your point, but it's a little larger area now, so hence the larger.
Yeah, a little, but the original lot hole is about 86 feet deep, not even a 100-foot lot, you know, to begin with. And you're going 17 and a half foot back and all that. So it's a lot of units on there. How many parking spaces?
Do you mean what the, you mean what the parking standard is? Because it's not, the chairman is pointing out, it's not an application, this is, there would be a standard for number of parking spaces for, that would be RSIS, right, Mary Ann?
Yes. Well, there's, right now, there's, 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 a, a concept of looking at the site with two levels of parking and wrapping that with retail. There looks to be 158 plus, almost 170, 175 spaces could fit maybe, maybe a little more because tandem would be permitted. But that would be determined and that would be evaluated at the time of site plan application. This redevelopment plan is like zoning, it identifies what's required and then, when a site plan comes in, they'll show us how they're going to do it.
All right. So once again, this is an application.
Correct.
Exactly.
Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. As a member of the zoning board, I can largely confirm Mr. Frank.
Michael, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to the public?
Absolutely. Thank you. As a member of the zoning board since July of 2014, I can confirm Mr. Frank Dantoni's history of this application during this period of time before the zoning board. The applicant came back before the zoning board in the fall of 2015, I believe it was October. They took a floor, one floor off and changed the breakdown of the mixture of units in the building. Previously, it was 40 and 42, one-bedroom, two-bedroom. In 2015, they changed it to 32, two-bedroom, 48, one-bedroom units. And then, two years later, fall of 2017, the applicant came back before the zoning board and asked for a one-year extension, which was granted, but obviously, that one-year period has expired. And to the best of my knowledge, the applicant has not asked for any additional extensions. So whatever the zoning board has approved in the last few years has probably now moved. So I wanted to ask Ms. Bucci, just to clarify the percentage breakdowns of the bedroom composition in this proposed, well, I know there's not a site plan yet. I don't think there's a site plan, we're just hypotheticals, but if I remember correctly, you said this particular project would allow a maximum of 20%, two-bedroom units?
The zoning, the redevelopment plan identifies that.
A maximum of 20% would be two-bedroom?
Yes.
And I think you also said a maximum of 80% one-bedroom units?
Well, the, the plan, that was the, that was part of the discussion. If it's 20%, that's not in, that's not in the, in the regulation. It's a maximum of two or more, two or more bedrooms, up 20%.
Okay, all right. And is this breakdown just particular for this particular project or is this, I know the township recently changed zoning along the Washington Avenue corridor, it's now all a uniform BG zone, but does this 20% threshold for two-bedroom units pertain to just this, this project or is that for anything, any new projects?
Right, right now, it, the only thing that it can pertain to is the land within the redevelopment area because it only applies to that. But the, the concept for this came out of the direction from the master plan and the, the requests from the board and, and, and the input on the master plan up to limit multi-bedroom units.
All right. So this is something you, particular to redevelopment zones, the 20?
Just to this plan.
Just, just.
We could only, right now, we can only do what's, what's within the purview and what's being heard right now is only this plan. It doesn't necessarily mean the same considerations can be brought in when new zoning is drafted and for other places, but right now, it only applies here.
I was trying to reconcile that number of percentage with what the planning board approved at their last meeting, a project across, another development project on Washington Avenue across from the motorcycle wall, there, there are 135 units about to be built and 86 of them are two-bedroom units. So that's 63% of the units in that development will be two-bedroom units. And this one, you're saying only, only 20%. So I'm trying to understand the large variance, why this, this one structure is allowing 63% two-bedroom units and what's being contemplated just south of this building is allowing a maximum of 20%. So is it possible for this structure at 78102 Washington Avenue, if the applicant requested to change the percentage of two-bedroom units instead of 20%, it could go to?
The reason why that was left there because their approval was several years back on that property, it was an old approval.
All right. So this is locked in at 20%. All right, all right. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have questions?
Good evening. Joe DiMarco, I'm an attorney, I represent the applicant or the property owner in this. Just, there were some things, I just want to make sure we all were on the same page or are clear about if we can. So the parking ratio was one per bedroom and then one per 800 feet of retail. There's about 10,000 square feet of retail when it's all said and done, and that comes about, about 25% of the ground floor. It is an L-shaped lot, so I know we talked a lot about setbacks. So William Street is zero, provided we can get a 10-foot sidewalk. Washington Street is zero, provided there is a 17 and a half foot sidewalk. If you're standing on William Street, the backyard that goes left is five feet. If you're standing on Washington Street, the backyard that goes on the right would be five feet. The challenge is in the back, where you L-shaped, to get accommodated parking, that plan that we had kind of went from zero to three in that corner L-shaped, if that makes sense to you. So I just didn't, you know, that's how we kind of work to the building now, if that makes sense there. The good news with that is it's an irregular lot in that corner in that back, so it's really just one little corner where it's at zero, but it goes to three. What it abuts against is a factor, right? So it's not like it's against someone's house, you know, windows. Because of the level, right, it slopes down, William Street, the units that we're putting up there really aren't looking at anyone's window, we're doing everything that's higher than the building behind it. But I just wanted that to be clear, you know, if we're going for a site plan application months from now or something to that effect, and someone rightly pointed out that, hey, in this L-shaped portion, you know, we're at zero to three. That's, you know, to maximize parking, provide enough retail, keep the sidewalk really big and all that, we're trying to use as much of, of the back space. There's also in the design, that becomes outdoor space also at the first level, so there's, it's really just for the parking deck. The building itself, as it goes up, steps back a little bit. There's an outdoor space where, as you come into the lobby, the design that we have planned is that an amenity space, a gym, a comfort area, a lot of these people who live in these units like to have those common areas and it would also have an outdoor patio space. If there are any other questions, I'd gladly answer them.
You're just clarifying what was in the report. The report stated what you just said.
I believe so, yes.
And you're just clarifying.
Yeah, because I didn't want any confusion. I want to make sure everyone understood because, you know, hopefully we'll be back in front of you a couple of months from now and I don't want someone to say, hey, that's not what happened, you know, when I was here in April, that's not what everybody.
That is the actual setback stuff that was changed. So that's, that's the stuff that's different between the, the last two, the two versions that we talked about.
I just want to make sure everyone, it gets a little, the weird shape of the lots, the way they line up, just wanted to make sure everyone understood how we built the place out.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think the way the plan reads, that setback requirement was taken out, so there is no requirement there. So that's why that could be zero in the one corner where it reaches the, I guess it's on an angle, I'm not really sure. No, no, it's not, it's not there. It's, so with this unusual lot, side, a side lot would be here, side and, and a side here. But this piece back here is what's along the, the industrial site and that does not have a setback requirement. That's the part that is just kind of, yeah, comes up, comes right up against there. So there is no, there is no requirement listed and it would be evaluated, basically, how it fits in, where it meets, where it butts, the elevation of, you know, what it's next to it. Because it doesn't qualify really as, as a side yard or technically it's not even a rear yard. Yeah, so that's, that's the, yeah. That, it could be it, that would be it, yeah.
I guess we were having a conversation up here about density, how density has changed. Is there's an increase in density? And density doesn't necessarily mean number of units.
I, I don't think there is. I didn't calculate that. I looked at the, the difference between the original provisions for this lot, at least that I guess people were talking about before, that it's been around a long time before it was even involved with, in redevelopment. Those numbers involve just the one lot and then the other two pieces were added and, and that's why I think all of a sudden it's bigger than, than people.
What's the percentage increase, 30% with the two lots that?
I think there is.
Yeah, it's quite a jump.
It is, it is a significant amount.
Yes, it is.
So it, it, you can, and the, the lots are divided on the map, so you can kind of see. of see, lot 11 is pretty big, so that made, that made a big difference.
And what, what's your opinion about the one to three-feet setback?
I, I think because it's on a slope, and because it's an industrial edge, that is okay, and the building is, the building lot is very narrow, it's, it would be unbuildable if, if, if that wasn't the case. Traditionally, if there's, if it's on a standard lot, a standard 100-foot deep lot, would, I would normally do 10 or 15 feet in, in the rear, depending on what's there. It really matters, and that's what the value of the redevelopment plan is, because it really matters what's there, because you could evaluate, given the exact, unique circumstances of that particular lot. In a general, uh, situation, 10 to 15 is, is usually standard, but this is the difference, basically because of the constricted, undersized nature and the, the adjacent, you know, industrial new sand slope.
So, you think this is a sound plan with a minimal setback taking into effect the size of the lot? And that's not a home next to it, it's a warehouse?
Yes, I do. I think that this is, is very unique, and this is a, I think that this is a, going to create a, a really nice, nice project.
Any other members have any other questions? Any summation, or?
Um, I don't really need to, to sum up. Um, if you have any, any other questions, I'll answer them, but I, I think, you know, hopefully, we can get to, get to a site plan, and, you know, we'll see the building go.
No one has any more questions? Would someone like to make a motion that, that we consider this consistent with the master plan, and send it to the board with the approval, that we feel it's, it's a, consistent with the township master plan? I'd like to make a motion to the board.
I'll second it.
This will roll?
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Van Gary.
Yes.
Mr. Honfi.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Vol.
Yeah.
Mr. Resziano.
Yes.
And Ms. Juan.
Yes.
And Ms. Novrato.
Yes.
Thank you. No further business. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn me?
I'll make a motion.
Take a second?
One second.
Leading is adjourned.